Good afternoon. Want to call the order of the May 25, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And this is our open session for this afternoon. We did have a closed session at 1:00. No reportable action out of that session. And so with that being said, I'll ask Flo Evans to please call a roll to establish a quorum, and then we'll do the announcements in a pledge of allegiance and jump right into the afternoon agenda.
Whoops. Sorry about that. Good morning or good afternoon. Supervisors Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. And this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, May 29 at 8:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask or shield, is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters. And when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500. And follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly, and each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo. Supervisor Kennedy, would you be so good as a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. And I know that as we get into the bulk of the agenda, that we have some order of things. I know that clerk and planning department have worked through that. The way we'll hear and then consider, particularly with the general plan round. But before we do that, we'd just welcome everyone that's with us, and certainly those that are following. I know it's a warm day outside, so if you didn't have to drive down here and still follow the meeting from the comfort of wherever else you are at, hopefully with air conditioning. I did want to note, too, that, and I know we received notice that the county has opened cooling centers at two of the DHA facilities. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, both the 28th Street and Florin Road locations.
Okay. And so they're open now through the evening hours?
Evening, through the evening hours. I think 8:00 p.m.
Okay. So if someone has, either in distress or having, you know, problems with, you know, cooling the air in their own place of residency, they certainly can come to those centers. We have water available and obviously-
Water, snacks. Everyone is available, is welcome, of course. Pets are allowed if they're on leash or in a crate.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Not, but we, that's only for today. It was yesterday and today, is that correct?
It was yesterday and today. The temperatures are expected to drop significantly tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Hannah. Okay. With that, then, we'll move to the off-agenda public comments. And I don't have any here before me at the dais, but you may have some on the phone.
And you do not have any public comments?
Okay.
So, but I do need to ask your Board to address an off-agenda matter. So pursuant to Government Code 54954.2B, there is a need to take immediate action on an item, and the need for action came to the attention of Sacramento County subsequent to the posting of the agenda. First, you need to determine the necessity to hear the item before you take action. And the following item for consideration is the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2022, honoring Mr. K.W. Lee. And that would be a resolution that you would be adopting as a consent item. So I would need two motions, first to determine the necessity, and then to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a motion to hear?
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded to hear the item. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great. And then, second motion to approve the item. Chair would move?
Second.
Moving second and twice. Okay.
And you could go with Frost.
All right. Very good. Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay. So no public comments on any matters, not on the agenda. If someone shows up, we certainly can take that into consideration. But at this point in time, we'll move on down into our agendas.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All right. For your first timed item, this is item number two. This is the Pick Store PCN, a request for a letter of public convenience or necessity from the Board of Supervisors to issue a Type 20 off-sale beer and wine liquor license for a convenience store at 445 C Auburn Boulevard in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community.
Okay. I see Mr. Pahuli, and then I don't know if the applicants are in the audience, but we-
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, Board members. I do not believe-
I think they may be arriving here. That may be.
Yeah. We did send a notice and confirmation that they received the notice.
Okay. A gentleman just walked in. We're gonna be, just beginning to hear the item on the letter of public convenience and necessity. So we're just now starting that. So we'll give an opportunity, if you are a part of the applicant group, once we hear the planning department report, then we'll call folks forward. So, all right. Very good. Chris, go ahead.
Okay. Chris Pahuli, Principal Planner with the Planning and Environmental Review Division. I will be providing the staff presentation for this item, which is a request for a letter of public convenience or necessity to the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control or ABC to issue a Type 20 beer and wine license for a new convenience store. The proposed pick store would be a new convenience store located at 4445 Auburn Boulevard in Suite C, which is an approximately 2,000 square foot space in a, in an existing 9,000 square foot retail center. According to the applicant's filed application, the opening of the business is not contingent on the granting of the ABC license. As I mentioned, the applicant is requesting the PCN letter, as the site is located in an area that is both in a high crime reporting district and over-concentrated with existing alcohol licenses. The subject property is zoned for general commercial use and is located on a commercial corridor surrounded by other commercial and industrial uses. It's important to also note that the subject property is located in the North Highlands Environmental Justice Community, one of the county's four EJ communities. This slide illustrates the subject site and other license holders and uses within the census tract and within a one-mile radius of the subject site. It is located within a census tract that permits one off-sale license, and there currently are three licenses, two of which are located 700 feet from the subject site, the Tower Market and SP Liquors. Within the one-mile radius, there is a full-service grocery store and 11 convenience stores providing for alcohol purchases. Staff also analyzed the one-mile radius for sensitive uses that would potentially conflict with the granting of the PCN. Although there are a number of sensitive uses, including schools and daycare centers, the closest school and daycare are located about 3,000 feet from the subject site. I also wanted to note, while looking at this map, the Sheriff's Office did provide information for the report package and noted that within a 100-foot radius of the subject parcel, there were three, I'm sorry, I think it's 1,000 feet of the subject parcel, there were three homeless camps, 2,000 calls for service, and 130 reports taken since 2021.
You said 2,000 calls for service?
Correct. According to the Sheriff's Office, these figures are considerably higher than other parts of the county. The applicant's request for a letter of PCN was presented to the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC on February 17. There were two written public comments received prior to the meeting, both indicating opposition. Although there was not a quorum of members present, the three members in attendance were in agreement that the Board should deny the request for a PCN letter. Staff's analysis of the request has resulted in a recommendation for denial. The recommendation was arrived at as the subject site is, as I mentioned, both in a high crime reporting district and over-concentrated with licenses. There are 12 alcohol-selling establishments located near the subject site, providing other options for alcohol purchases and meeting the public convenience needs of area residents. Subject site is located within the North Highlands EJ community that I mentioned, and that the general plans for the environmental justice element indicates that the county will control uses where there is an over-concentration of licenses. The Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC indicated opposition without a quorum, and the site is near several uses that are considered sensitive in the context of alcohol licenses. I do want to note that in correspondence with the state ABC staff, they have indicated that if the PCN is approved, the Sheriff's Department's recommended conditions would be applied on the ABC license. However, I further want to note, based on the conversations that we've had at other Board hearings, that after a one-year period, the applicant could request modification of those license conditions. And that request for modification would be routed to the, routed to the county for comment. However, the decision to modify those conditions would be solely within ABC's purview. In closing, staff is recommending the Board deny the request for a letter of PCN for the proposed pick store. If the Board decides to approve this request, staff recommends imposing the proposed conditions on the county business license and supporting the proposed conditions to ABC for placement on the Type 20 license. That concludes my presentation. I also want to note that we do have Jim Hicks and Sergeant Connor Milligan from the Sheriff's Office that are also here and can answer questions that the Board may have. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, Chris, we do have some questions. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chris, and I appreciate the, the presentation and the briefing you gave me. Just to be, so is the applicant occupying that site right now?
I do not believe they are.
Okay. Do you know what's there?
I believe it's vacant.
It's vacant. Okay. And just to be clear, so this is actually in Foothill Farms, but it's part of the North Highlands Environmental Justice?
That's correct. It's right on the outskirts of it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff at this juncture? I don't see anyone in the queue. All right. Well, thank you, Chris. So I trust we have representatives in the audience from the pick store. So this is the opportunity, if you're here on that item, to come forward, just identify yourself. You can fill a speaker request form. So is someone here to talk? Okay, come forward, sir. Just give us your name, and you can fill out a form later. And good afternoon.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
You bet.
This is Ramesh Modu. We have applied for the Pick Store LLC. We wanted to start the business at the place. We mentioned the address. We wanted to give the service for the community people. That's why we have applied.
Okay. Ramesh, I know you submitted a letter that's in our packet. We have, when you submitted the application, I think you got a chance to hear that staff is recommending for denial. Are there any points you wanted to point out? Obviously, Mr. Pahuli said that your business wasn't necessarily dependent upon the alcoholic beverages. But if there's any, this is your opportunity to add anything, again, to, to the information that might help us in making a decision. So is there anything else, anything else you wanted to add?
No.
No? No? But you're available for questions. I don't know, any member have questions of Mr. Modu? Okay. I don't see any questions. So at any rate, then, if that's your presentation, thank you for being here. And was there anybody else in the audience that wanted to address this? Okay. I don't see anyone else. Okay. You can be seated unless there's any other one. Okay. Thank you very much for being here. Okay. All right. Then I'll bring it back to the Board. The applicant is present, and we've heard the staff report. So I'll turn to Mr. Desmond, if you'd like, and you can-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Modu, for being here today. I certainly appreciate you wanting to invest in this community. It's a, a community that, that, that needs more investment, which is why it's one of our environmental justice communities, and one of the, one of the many reasons. I, for one, I, I like this PCN process that we have in place because it's really an opportunity for us to evaluate the suitability for these kinds of uses in our communities and demonstrate to the community that we're, we're sensitive to their needs and concerns. I am, because of the, the reasons mentioned by, by staff, and staff appreciate, certainly appreciate your work, appreciate Sergeant Gillespie, your, your, your work as well. Because of the proliferation of liquor licenses in the nearby area and the increased crime rate in the area, I think we'd be doing a disservice to grant another alcohol license in this vicinity. And so for that reason, I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for a PCN.
Okay. All right. So, excuse me, the motion is made and seconded to approve staff recommendation, which would be to deny the application. And do we have any callers on the phone? I should have asked earlier.
We did, we do not have any public comments.
Okay. And I have no one else on to speak. So with that, then, if there's nothing further, then we'll go ahead and vote on motion.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for being here. The, the application is denied. All right. Thank you. Next, next one.
Okay. Item three is your Housing Trust Fund Annual Fee Index Mechanism. You're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.89 of the Sacramento County Code, waiving full reading and continuing to June 7 for adoption.
Great. And we have Leanne Mueller with us today. We haven't seen her for a long time. We've seen you in the audience, but I don't think at the, at the podium. So good afternoon, Leanne.
Not, I believe this is actually my first time presenting to the Board.
It is. Well, you're, you're gonna knock it out of the park.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, you have some music when you hit the home run, so.
All right. Let's get that queued up, right?
Watching baseball.
See, we got all this stuff. We're ready to go.
I was tempted to ask you what the score was.
Poor Patrick that we're living down. Okay. All right, Leanne, with that, the introduction, go right ahead.
Thank you, Board members. I am Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review. And the item before you today is the Housing Trust Fund Annual Indexing Fee Mechanism Update. So to give you a little bit of background, as part of the ordinance update that the Board adopted in January of 2022, we did actually add an indexing mechanism for the first time. And this applies to our Housing Trust Fund, which is on non-residential developments. As part of the ordinance update, the Board did, as I said, include an annual index, and that annual index is currently the Building Cost Index 20-City Average, which is published by Engineering News Record. However, the Board also directed staff to explore alternative annual indexes that would more closely take into account the cost of housing. So to give you a little bit of background on our Housing Trust Fund fee, it is a one-time fee that is paid at building permit. It applies to the development of new non-residential buildings in the unincorporated portion of Sacramento County. It is deposited into our Housing Trust Fund, which is managed by the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, or SHRA. To date, it has provided approximately 3,000 affordable units since it was established in 1990. So to reiterate, that was established in 1990, and until you had updated that fee in January, it had not been updated since 1992. And historically, it did not have an indexing mechanism associated with it. So one of the actions that the Board took was actually to include an indexing mechanism. So when we look at the indexing options that staff had worked with our consultant, Kaiser Marston Associates, you have four, which are actual indexes. So we have the E&amp;R construction cost, which is the current mechanism in the ordinance. We have rents, home prices, and the consumer price index. And you also have three blends of those indexes. So Blend 1 has 40% home prices, and then 20% each to rents, E&amp;R, and the CPI. Blend 2 provides a 25% weight to all of those four indexes. And then Blend 3 provides a 40% weight to the E&amp;R, and 20% each to rents, home prices, and CPI. And then to further break that down, we have an annualized percent of increase from the 20, from 2000 to 2021, which is essentially a 21-year period, that would give the Board an idea of the percent of increase that could be expected for each of those indexes. So the current one that we use, the E&amp;R, would be like 3.3%. The highest would be home prices. And then each of the other blends fall somewhere in between, generally ranging from about 3.6 to about 3.9. And then further, because we, the first annual indexing provided such a long range of time, we have also provided the percent increase that happened from 2017 through 2021. And you can see that in the column on the right. Again, E&amp;R experienced approximately 33%. The highest was home prices with 58. And then the other blends and indexes fell somewhere in between that. So what this slide shows for the Board is a graphic representation of the slide on the previous page. So you're looking at the E&amp;R in blue, the home prices was in gray, and then Blend 1 weighted towards home prices is the X's. So as you can see, the E&amp;R was kind of a slow, steady increase, whereas home prices has peaks associated with valleys, associated with recessions. And then when you get into the blends, it tends to vary depending on what has the greatest weight associated with it. So staff's recommendation to the Board today is to choose Blend 1, which is weighted to 40% home prices. The thought is it may provide a greater increase in fees, and it does take into account the direct cost of housing. One of the things to be aware of with that blend is there will be ongoing costs associated with calculating that weighted blend. We would have to have an ongoing contract to obtain data from all the indexes, because currently staff doesn't have subscription to these indexes. And we estimate that there would be an initial cost set up in the first year, and then an ongoing cost in subsequent years to calculate that.
Leanne, just pause for one, if you could, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. Leanne, relative to that cost associated with subscriptions, you know, in this day and age with the access to information via the Internet, how difficult is, is it to acquire, like, the E&amp;R index outside of holding a subscription? Have you looked at, at, you know, the ability to acquire that data for no cost?
So for the E&amp;R, one of our departments actually already has a subscription to it. So for E&amp;R, we, we actually have ready access to that, and that is the current mechanism that we use for our affordable housing ordinance. So staff's already pretty comfortable with calculating that. It's just when we get to the other blends, we don't have ready access to those. So we would have to either work with a consultant or try and find sources of that data on our own.
So I assume maybe the more tedious index to, to tap into would be the home prices?
It would take, it would take more work. Like I said, we could either work with a consultant to provide us that, because they would have access to those indexes, and they could help us calculate that weighted blend.
What, have you talked to our housing authority to see if they actually have access to that information already?
We haven't actually talked to them to see if they have access to it. We, it was something certainly that we could look at. But since usually what happens is staff calculates a lot of the, like, for the affordable housing ordinance, we calculated using the E&amp;R, which we have access to. So we haven't done an in-depth survey to see who has access to all those indexes.
I would be surprised if, if SHRA does not have access to some of it. So I don't, I don't know that it's, it's, this is a big enough deal for, for me to be too dissuaded from taking action today.
Right.
But I do feel like that cost, as nominal as it may seem, may not necessarily need to be incurred, because I believe it probably does exist somewhere within, you know, the universe of Sacramento County's government and certainly the Housing Authority as well.
And that may very well be, but we've just presented it to the Board as kind of the worst case. If, if we can't find another department or outside agency that we work with that has access to it, then we would end up contracting with a consultant for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Hannah, I was gonna weigh in. Go ahead. You're probably gonna say what I'm gonna say, so.
I was just gonna ask Mr. DeFonte to weigh in on this.
Yeah. I think Leanne nailed it, where we would absolutely look internally first to see if departments had that information. For instance, rent looks to CoStar. You know, I know economic development functions oftentimes already have subscriptions to CoStar. So we'll do our homework internally. I think, you know, she represented it well. This is the worst-case scenario, and even at that, these costs are incredibly nominal. So either way, this would be your worst case, and we'll try to do better than that.
I, as I was saying, for the CPI, we use it for calculating salaries, compensation packages, Department of Finance tracks that, for other aspects of bonds and so forth. I mean, it would seem to me that three of the four, and the home prices, I mean, there's enough sources that are certainly reliable to get reported in just in the open press that, you know, again, you need to have it to back up what you do. But, you know, and it's a nominal amount. I don't disagree with that. But it just seems to me that the sources, and whether they're readily available to planning department, not, if you can funnel that information, it'd be as quick as a phone call to somebody upstairs or across the way. So, okay. I would concur that we probably don't need to have a subscription. I bet you we already have one. Okay. Leanne, continue. I think you had a little couple more.
Okay. So the action that the Board could potentially take today is to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 16.89 of the Sacramento County Code. That is our Housing Trust Fund ordinance. And you would be then, per staff's recommendation, including Blend 1 as the annual index. We also would recommend that you waive full reading and continue the item to June 7, 2022, for adoption.
Okay.
I can answer any questions you may have. And our consultant, David Dozema, with Kaiser Marston Associates, I believe, is on the phone. And Christine Wyker with SHRA is in the audience today.
Okay. Great. Well, thanks for that. And we know we have people available. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Leanne, and Todd Smith and Abstentia, too, for all the diligent work that you've done to, to look at different ways to, I think, fairly accurately explore how we can index the Housing Trust Fund. You know, I, I think it's probably one of the more important indices that this Board would consider, given the nature of what we're facing, what we've been facing now for, for some time, in terms of the lack of housing affordability in not just Sacramento County, but throughout the region and across the state and country. So I think the fact that you've come up with a recommendation that I think reasonably has looked at those component parts to it, that I think fairly weight the influence of housing prices is the, is the right way to go. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if we have any public speakers, but if not, I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
Okay. We do have a motion in a second. Let me see if we have any, we have any callers?
And we do not have any callers.
Okay. And I don't have any- Okay, and I don't have any sign receipts. Was anybody here in the audience that wished to address this item? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board. Thanks, Christine, for being here. Thanks, David, for being on the phone. And we do have a motion in a second, so please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great. Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome back anytime. Thanks. Okay, next item.
All righty. Item three, this is the West of Watt Urban Development Area Designation Amendment.
All righty. Mr. Puhuli is back.
Yeah, good afternoon once again. So I'd like to provide a brief lead-in for the next four items, which comprise the county's second of four potential rounds of general plan amendments. There is one general plan amendment resolution covering these next four items. Therefore, adoption of the resolution and associated exhibit should occur following the public hearings being concluded for these four items and action on their environmental documents. So following adoption of the general plan amendment resolution, action on the balance of entitlements for Items Seven and Six will be necessary. So unless there's any questions about that process, I'd like to introduce Todd Taylor from our long-range planning team to provide the presentation for Item Four.
Very good. Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
And Todd makes his debut as well today. So, Mr. Taylor, welcome.
This item is the West of Watt Urban Development Area General Plan Amendment to modify text in the land use element related to the urban development area or UDA designation. For background, this is a continuation of discussions that already happened at the Board of Supervisors. In the 2020 General Plan Annual Report, staff had identified issues with the UDA designation and in the West of Watt area. At the hearing for the General Plan Annual Report in 2021, the board heard those issues and initiated the general plan amendment with Resolution 2021-0141. Currently, the general plan requires a master plan to be prepared for, for urban, for properties designated as with the UDA designation to be able to be rezoned. This proposed general plan amendment would allow rezones to occur on UDA properties as long as they meet certain requirements, and those requirements are that they are adjacent to existing urban development, that the proposal is for a similar intensity of use, and that the properties are located both within a water and sewer service area. Staff looked at the UDA designated parcels and found approximately 24 parcels are located both within the water and sewer service area, and of those two are currently vacant. Please note that this amendment is not a rezone of properties or does not allow construction to occur, but allows applications to be submitted for rezones. Those applications would still go through the planning process, the environmental review process, and public hearing process with an ultimate determination by your board. The text amendments occur in two places in the land use element. The first is the definition of the UDA, and you can see here that we've added the language for requiring adjacency to existing urban development of a similar intensity use and being included within a water and sewer district service area. The second text amendment is similar to the first and is located in a section of the general, of the land use element related to the zoning consistency matrix. With that, it's staff's recommendation that the board recognize the exempt status of the request under Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, and as Mr. Puhuli indicated, hold off on adopting the resolution until all of the second round general plan amendment items have been heard. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Todd. But you are asking initially for the exempt, request for the exempt status of the environmental document as a precursor?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So that would be part of our motion in a moment. So do we have anyone on the phones, too?
We do not.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? All right, seeing none. Any questions by board members? Three for three. Okay. So with that, the motion that would be in order at this juncture would be then to just recognize the exempt status of the environmental document, and then we'll hold the remaining portion of the item for the package as we get to Items Six and Seven later on. Okay. Moving to second to approve staff recommendation for this portion of the application. If there's nothing further, then please vote.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote, just recognizing the exempt status of the request.
Okay.
Okay. And now we will move on to Item Five, which is the Safety Element Background Update.
Okay, Ms. Taylor's back. Oh, my gosh, that was quick.
Yep.
Been here before. Go ahead, Don.
I think.
Oh, you know what? That's at 2:45, so you need to take a little recess. Thank you, Ann.
Okay, very good. All right. So we're moving rapidly here today. So we will take a recess for eight minutes, and we don't have any nomination, I think, so we'll be in recess for eight minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, I called board back in the session after a brief recess. Better call to roll real quickly to make sure we get the quorum, if everybody's in their seats, but.
Yes. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. And I'll go ahead and read the item back into the record. Are we on Item Five? Thank you.
Five, yeah.
That's what my notes say. I didn't trust my notes. Safety Element Background Update.
Good afternoon, board. Todd Taylor again, Senior Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. This item is the Safety Element Background Document, General Plan Amendment, to update language related to the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, or LHMP, and include text required by the state. It also updates outdated hyperlinks. For background, Assembly Bill 2140 required that FEMA-approved local hazard mitigation plans be adopted into the safety element of jurisdictions in order to receive full disaster funding or maximum disaster funding from the state. In September of 2017, the county amended the general plan to adopt the current LHMP, the 2016 LHMP, by reference into the safety element and included specific references to the 2016 LHMP in the safety element background. The LHMP is updated every five years, and in February of this year, your board adopted the 2021 LHMP. The proposed amendments would ensure that the county stays in compliance with AB 2140 and includes language that was requested by Cal OES through our LHMP consultant to be included in the general plan. That required text is a very brief description of AB 2140. Oh, the text which is included in your resolution is a very brief description of AB 2140, LHMP linkage to the safety element, disaster relief funding, the county's LHMP, and adoption of it. And the most important part is a hyperlink to our most currently adopted LHMP.
Todd, let me, I just ask you on that, though, but it doesn't require a general plan amendment to update the outdated hyperlink. That can be done anytime, right?
I don't think we have any mechanism in our general plan that states that we can just go in and update text based on.
Well, what's a hyperlink? You're linking to something else, right? Some other information. It's not, it's not our information you're linking. If I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding, walk me through what we're doing here. But if you have to wait for a general plan update every time you get a hyperlink that's outdated, that doesn't make sense to me.
The hyperlink is requested by the state for this specific issue. I know we had a recent general plan amendment that allowed us to make some updates based on other jurisdictions' changes, and I don't know if that would cover hyperlinks.
Yeah, perhaps in response, we could work with county council to determine if those are administrative updates that perhaps could be handled by staff without being subject to a general plan amendment.
June, want to weigh in? I see you shaking your head, but it gets on the record.
Yes, I was gonna say I agree with what Mr. Puhuli said. Those are things that we can analyze and make sure that they're not substantive changes or any discretion is being afforded or used. And if not, then we can do that administratively.
That's great. Well, that makes good sense from efficiency standpoint, but, you know, getting an item to this board, I've seen the rates and schedules and, you know, thousands of dollars because of all the reviews that goes through and all the vetting. And so if you can do that administratively, then I think it, one, is much more efficient, and then, you know, it doesn't require necessarily, for those types of items, have to come back to this board. So I would concur unless there's any disagreement about that, so. Okay. All right, thanks. Go, Don.
Chair Natoli, I definitely agree, and we included those updates just since we were already affecting this.
Right, this is before, but this was on a going-forward basis, I think, as what Ms. Powell's May's referred to and Chris too. So we can handle those today, it's just that in the future, it would seem to me we can be a little more efficient and rely upon, you know, a good basis of information for making non-substantive changes, but ones that update hyperlinks, so.
Thank you. No new policies are proposed as part of this general plan amendment, and with that, it's staff's recommendation that the board recognize the exempt status of the request under Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, and as before, hold off on adopting the resolution until all of the second round general plan amendment items have been heard.
Okay, great. Thanks, Todd. Any questions to Mr. Taylor?
Staff recommendations.
Okay. Second. Can we have a motion? Second, I need to ask if there was any public comment on this item. Anybody on the phones?
Do you have any? Let me get to that screen.
And we're on Item Five. I do have someone from Item Six, but this is Item Five.
Yeah, no, I don't have anyone in the queue for any items right now.
Okay.
Just to let you know.
Yeah, we do have a person in chambers on Item Six.
Okay.
Okay, so anyone here in the chambers want to address Item Five? All right, seeing none, then let's call for the vote.
Unanimous vote.
And that is for the environmental document, and we'll come back to the remaining portion resolution in a few moments. All right, next item, please.
All right. For Item Number Six, this is the Castleman Northwest Project, a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, rezone tentative subdivision map, exception and design review for a property located at 8595 Castleman Road on the north side of Castleman Road, west of Elk Grove Florin Road in the Vineyard Community. The applicant is Castleman 20 LLC, and the environmental document is an addendum to final environmental impact report.
Chris, as you introduce this item, there is linkage to the item that will be subsequently heard. Is that correct? So maybe you're gonna lay that out just so it's understood, because I know we do have at least one member of the audience that wants to speak to this item. I think it's related to maybe Item Seven as well, so.
Yeah, I, we will be mentioning the linkage is part of Item Seven, but through this presentation, if there are questions about that link between the two, I can certainly go into that.
Okay, so Item Six stands on its own, but Item Seven is dependent in part on Item Six?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Okay, once again, Chris Puhuli with Planning and Environmental Review. I'll be providing the staff presentation for this item, which is a suite of entitlements for the proposed Castleman Northwest subdivision. I'd also like to note that we have additional county staff in attendance from Department of Transportation, Water Resources, and Metro Fire, should there be any board questions following the presentation. The subject site is located at 8595 Castleman Road, west of Elk Grove Florin Road and northwest of where Castleman Road currently terminates. The site is vacant with mature eucalyptus trees along its southern border. The current zoning for the site is Agriculture 10, and the applicant has requested a rezone to Residential 5 to allow for the proposed subdivision. The surrounding community is primarily residential to the northeast and west, and there is vacant land located to the south of the property. The site is located within the Florin Vineyard Community Plan area with the northern and western boundaries of the project site, creating the boundaries of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan. This exhibit shows a little bit of a composite with developments surrounding the subject site. The proposed subdivision is proximate to the approved but yet unconstructed Castleman South subdivision, which will result in 90 single-family residential lots and the constructed Castleman Ranch subdivision that contains 255 single-family residential lots. There is a property located between the Castleman Northwest property and the Castleman Ranch subdivision that throughout this presentation I will refer to as the Barbero property, and it contains an existing single-family residence. The entitlement package before you today includes a request for a general plan amendment to change the property's land use designation from an agricultural residential designation to a low-density residential designation. In addition, the project includes a community plan amendment to change the property's agricultural residential one to two designation to residential density three to five. The proposed rezone establishes residential zoning consistent with the proposed general plan amendment and community plan amendments and allows for the subdivision of the site into 66 single-family lots. The tentative subdivision map requires an exception to Title 22 of county code to allow the subdivision to be constructed with only one point of access where two points of access are otherwise required. And then lastly, the entitlement package includes a design review. This slide shows the proposed tentative subdivision map, which divides the 17.9-acre property into 66 single-family lots, one detention basin lot, one landscape lot, and one channel lot, and then it also abandons several onsite portions of right-of-way and irrevocable offers of dedication. The Union House Channel runs along the northern portion of the site, and the basin is at the westernmost edge of the property. The landscape lot is just east of the basin and will feature a 10-foot multi-use trail that will stub to the south and will be dedicated to South Gate Recreation and Park District. The subdivision is accessed via Castleman Road from Elk Grove Florin, as I mentioned. As only one point of access is provided, the project request includes that exception to this requirement that I mentioned a bit earlier. Castleman Road will be constructed pursuant to Sacramento County Improvement Standards and in compliance with the Florin Vineyard Community Plan. In an effort to create connectivity, the sidewalk proposed along the north side of Castleman Road will continue across the Barbero property and connect the Castleman Northwest subdivision to the Castleman Ranch subdivision. An environmental impact report was prepared for the.
Excuse me, Chris, so you're saying as a part of the project, that will be constructed?
Correct.
Okay, so, but is there existing right-of-way there, or?
I believe that that right-of-way must be purchased, but I can check on that.
Okay, so, but that's, that's then the responsibility of the owner or of the applicant or the county?
Of the applicant.
Well, I know how that works. That sometimes becomes very difficult for the, you know, the private entity. Sometimes they can acquire that, but we've had some experience, certainly not just in my portion of the, of the Vineyard area, but elsewhere in the Vineyard area where for drainage and or road easements, they turn to the county often to do that. So, but if I understand correctly, that's an obligation that goes with the property development, and it's not an obligation borne by the county.
Yeah, that's what I believe so, but we will check into that.
Okay, if you could. Thanks.
Okay. As I was mentioning, the environmental impact report was prepared for the Florin Vineyard Community Plan when it was first adopted. That EIR considered several land use alternatives for the plan area, including an alternative in which this southwest portion of the plan was designated for RD 3 to 5 land uses. As it was previously considered, an addendum to the prior EIR was prepared for this project. The project would result in less than significant impact with the implementation. The project would result in less than significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures that are contained in the MMRP. The project was considered by the Planning Commission, the Vineyard CPAC, and the DRAC prior to today's meeting. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed project, and the DRAC recommends that the project be found in compliance with the design guidelines and the Florin Vineyard Community Plan guidelines. The Vineyard CPAC recommended denial of the project on a split vote and expressed concerns related to the lack of an onsite park, the basin potentially being oversized, a lack of guest parking, and poor emergency vehicle access. In response to the CPAC's concerns, I will note that a park is not proposed on the project site, as the development will be subject to in-lu fees as opposed to parkland dedication at the request of Southgate Recreation and Park District. The Castleman project, Castleman Ranch project, I should say, includes a park site, the Jimmy Yee Park, and is estimated to be, or is in close proximity to this proposed subdivision. The Department of Water Resources has reviewed the preliminary drainage study and confirmed that the basin is adequately sized to serve the development. Guest parking is, will be available on-street to serve the subdivision. And then lastly, the project was reviewed by Metro Fire, who provided their conditions of approval to ensure that they would be adequately able to access and serve the subdivision. So although the Vineyard CPAC recommends denial of the proposed project, staff is recommending approval of the proposed request. This recommendation is based on our analysis that the subdivision is compatible with its largely low-density residential development surrounding it. It is consistent with applicable lot standards and complies with the Florin Vineyard Community Plan as amended. Additionally, the Planning Commission and the DRAC are recommending approval. Several conditions are in place to require additional design review at subsequent phases of the development to ensure future residential development, including landscape corridors, trails, and the basin comply with design guidelines. Several conditions relate to required improvements to Castleman Road, including conditions to improve the portion of Castleman at the Barbero property and continue that sidewalk that we were discussing. And then lastly, fire conditions relate to the compliance with the fire code to provide emergency vehicle access. Staff recommends that the board conduct the public hearing and at conclusion certify that the Florin Vineyard Community Plan EIR is adequate and complete based on the environmental addendum prepared for the project, and that the board adopt the MMRP as included as Attachment 12 to this report package. And then following those actions, that after the next item, that you return for the balance of the entitlements for this project. That concludes my presentation, and as noted, there are other department representatives here that can answer questions.
Okay, we're gonna take questions for board members first. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Chris, a couple of things. The detention basin, what's that look like? I mean, is it just open space? Because, you know, the complaint about no park, but we're often now, we see in many communities where we're co-locating detention bases and using them as park space. Is that possible here?
I will let Department of Water Resources staff maybe talk in detail about this facility, but it is not currently planned as a conjunctive use facility. It's currently planned just as a detention and water quality basin. There is, as I mentioned, a trail, a multi-use trail that will travel down the eastern portion of the detention basin. But in terms of the basin itself, it is not proposed to be a conjunctive use with a park facility.
But as you said, Southgate Rec and Park District, who I think is like the gold standard for park districts, they're happy with the situation?
Correct. They believe that because there is the park in the Castleman Ranch subdivision that's proximate to this subdivision, that it's appropriately served.
Okay, and there's nothing precluding, because we have in the past taken parks and turned them into detention facilities and vice versa. There's nothing to preclude that from happening, should it be appropriate in the future?
Potentially, but I would ask the Department of Water Resources staff perhaps.
With, you know, working with water resources in the parks and all that.
Correct.
But it's possible. We're not precluding that from happening today.
Yeah.
Okay. Second question is, or I guess third, is, so we did just get a letter given or handed to us anyway, I think it was, we got it earlier, that from a member of the CPAC. And one question was the lack of safe routes to schools in the communities along Castleman to get to Mary Sukamoto Elementary School. Was that ever discussed?
It was. The site, the elementary school is quite a distance south to the proposed subdivision. We have talked about, as I mentioned, the trail will be stubbed at Castleman. I think as the area continues to develop, there will be some additional possibilities to create further north-south connections that could eventually connect to the elementary school further to the south. But currently, there isn't a path forward across multiple properties to get further south.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, while you're there, I wanted to follow up, and I know we did get the letter from Emily Brantley, who's here in the audience on behalf of the Vineyard CPAC. But back to the basin, if it's not currently being considered for use as a park, as Supervisor Kennedy says, and it's not necessarily precluded, but I want to know what the landscaping treatment is, because again, I've seen the basin adjacent to Jimmy Yee Park, and it's on a pretty confined space, but it was done with wrought iron fencing and, you know, landscaping around the perimeter and so forth. And I know Michael Johnson's here in the audience, and we've had some experience elsewhere in the vineyard area where it's taken an exceptionally long time to see some of the improvements were contemplated, and we're still working with Southgate to try to get some of the amenities that folks believe are important. And so I guess I'm curious as to, with this basin, you can have a trail on the east side of it, but then you got this patch of open space that would serve the utility up against the railroad tracks. And so I'm curious about the fencing, about the grades, the slopes there, and what looks are, are you gonna have it perimeter landscaped? And is there, is it maintained in a way that you actually, the trees and so forth, if they're allowed around the perimeter so it doesn't interfere with equipment and maintenance? But there's no, I don't have any detail. Maybe it's in another exhibit. You know, there's several hundred pages in the staff report, but I'm just working off of your exhibit on page six here, so.
So I will let Mike Johnson speak to the design and the landscaping of the actual basin itself, but in terms of the perimeter and the fencing and so forth, I would call attention to conditions four and five, which do call for a subsequent design review process for us to really pay some attention to the landscaping and the fencing that is the perimeter, at the perimeter of the detention basin. But I'll hand it over to Mike.
So just to be asking that, so why is that subsequent? Why, when you bring this to the board for final approval of the map, the last time we're gonna see it except for the adoption of the final map, that, and then, you know, staff will be in a position of having to discuss, and certainly will exercise good judgment, I trust. But when we have the conversation here, and would actually make those conditions explicit, recognize there might be some detail, you know, whether it's you or Mr. Johnson or anybody else, you know, you'll be, you know, working with obviously the project applicant, their engineer who's in the audience. But, you know, these all have costs associated with them, and if they're conditioned by the board, it's one thing. If just say you're gonna review it, and then if you make a call that says, well, we want some benches, blah, 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 and folks say, well, that's a lot of expense, and the board didn't tell us we have to do it. So I guess I'm kind of curious, how do you get to the board for approval and leave, you know, leave so much latitude that I think puts staff in a difficult position? Again, you know, Mr. Walters has done a lot of work out there, and I'm sure he'll be very honorable on behalf of the applicant here. But again, those are amenities, and I can tell you from experience, and Michael's been out there to the site with me, what we're working through details still on another basin, and one that even was approved some 10 years ago, where now there's a question about whether, even if the homeowners want to pay for it, whether they can even put benches in adjacent to the basin? And so I guess I'm curious as to how we can have an open-handed condition that leaves a lot to, yet to be decided, and this is the last time the board's gonna see it.
Well, I would say that that approach of conditioning the project with subsequent design reviews, especially when there are still some details to be worked out on the size of the basin and exactly the layout, those, that is a standard way that we have been approaching it. I understand the concern that you're noting. We are going to be relying upon the guidance that's in our countywide design guidelines and in the Florin Vineyard Community Plan guidelines to address the landscaping. And then quite honestly, a lot of times, these details, the landscaping component of it is an item that would be worked out later through the process and not at this stage of the process.
Well, I guess I'm speaking from experience in two districts I represent, that where the amenities weren't all spoken to at the time, and it's not this developer, but, you know, we're still working through it. You know, but I had a call from one of the residents there who serves on, you know, on the homeowners association in the area, and another one where there's a big question about whether they can even put benches in. And so maybe that was past tense, and this is now, this is how we do it. Again, I just, I think some certainty around it, certainly so that the development parties know, but also that the community knows. And again, if you have to work out the detail about how wide the landscaping is, but if there's gonna be irrigation, will you allow for benches along the trail? Is the trail paved or is it, you know, decomposed ground? I mean, I don't know. I mean, those are questions that, again, typically that I thought would be embedded in a staff report, in a recommendation, in a condition, leaving it to the final detail to be worked out. So I guess I'd like to hear from Michael, because I can tell you the drainage issue sometimes does conflict with, you know, with the desirability that the neighbors would like to see relative to some of the amenities, I mean, from a safety standpoint, from a utility standpoint. And it's not a perfect world. On the other hand, I can tell you, you know, I have had friction in two neighborhoods I represent immediately to the east, so.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Mike Johnson, Water Resources.
Hi, Mike.
This basin is a little bit different than some of the other basins you might have seen, especially the soccer field basin we're building in Laguna Creek. That is a true joint-use basin. It is gonna be a soccer field, and periodically, very infrequently, there'll be floodwater scored in there. This basin's a flood control basin. It accepts water from Union House Creek. There's also drainage, local drainage that drains in there. It's a water-quality basin, so during the winter part of the year, it will be inundated. So there's not a lot of opportunity for joint use with Southgate, and we've talked about that. Another thing we talked about was a trail around the entire basin, and eventually, Southgate decided against that because they didn't think it was too safe to have people traveling around to the railroad tracks and fenced in by the basin and the railroad tracks. So they're happy with, or they're accepting what we're proposing, which is a basin will have a wrought iron fence around the entire basin. There'll be a landscape corridor on the east side, adjacent to the neighborhood, that will screen and buffer the area between the subdivision and the detention basin. So we think that's a good plan for this area.
Okay, so is there lighting provided along the trail?
I don't know. I think that's a question for Southgate. They're gonna be the owners of that corridor between the edge of the basin and the road. I think it's like a 24, 25-foot corridor. They'll have a trail. I assume they'll have lighting, but I don't know.
Well, and again, and Michael, I appreciate your help, because you've been involved in at least one of the discussions I referenced here, that, you know, lighting comes at an expense. I know Southgate obviously has to negotiate with the developer. Once it passes through our hands, it's been approved, and condition just leads it to people to figure it out. Well, that's a negotiating, you know, stance versus conditions. And not that we know all the conditions, and again, this is Supervisor Kennedy's district, so I don't want to get too far scans here, but it just, again, experience tells me that, you know, if you build those amenities in, and it's a known quantity, it becomes a part of the approval process, and then you work out the details. But lighting or no lighting has relevance to times of the year when that basin might be full of water. Again, if it's fenced, obviously, then intrusion into it's gonna be very difficult unless they scale the fence. But again, whether it's desirable to have lighting, whether Southgate applies that everywhere, I don't know. But you've been involved in discussions where just, you know, benches weren't accounted for, the way the trail was outlined, the amount of trees, in fact, they were just, they were just gonna put bark down on the ground. I mean, again, another development, and maybe that's what we do here, too. I don't know. But, and then, but it just leaves it all to question. And we're being asked here to prove the map and give the go-ahead, and then tell folks to go out and figure it out, so. And I hear what you're saying is that Southgate's responsible. Is Southgate here today? Is there a representative for Southgate?
Southgate is not here today.
Okay. All right. One other point I want to make here, and it goes to, I think, the community council concerns, and I appreciate that staff worked with Metro Fire and with Southgate to have subsequent follow-on, to have conversations with not just the Vineyard CPAC, but community members who are interested. But, you know, there's not the ability to move north-south or get out to Elk Grove Florin, which is the primary, you know, north-south because of the way development has occurred and, you know, between some of the space between the old rural roads that now, you know, have many, you know, dozens of houses on them. This trail would link from north to south, because it would bridge the two areas there. But where does it go south of here, south of this development? Does it link to anything, or does it just stop at the roadway?
I couldn't tell you that Southgate's, unless they have a, they have a trail plan. I haven't looked at it, though.
It would currently just be stubbed at this, at the end of this property, at Castleman, with an opportunity to further continue it.
So the properties are undeveloped on both sides, north and south of this. There's the ability to capture a trail that would ultimately get you out to Gerber, and I guess far south is Vintage Park, potentially. Well, I want to get to Vintage Park now, wouldn't get there.
Right, you'd go further south from here, yeah.
How do you connect to the north?
You wouldn't connect to the north of the site.
Because that's part of the concern about circulation. If you can't have automobile circulation, at least you could have people's circulation and via bike, pedestrian, and so forth. But so basically you have a trail that goes nowhere right now.
You have a stubbed trail that could continue further south, correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I had right now. Thanks, thanks, Michael. Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and with that, I know we do have a speaker. We'll have the applicant come forward first. Mr. Walters, I represent the project. And then Ms. Brantley.
Chair, members of the board, Bruce Walters, Walters Land Planning, representing the applicant and the property owner.
Mr. Walters, may I take your oath really quick?
Oh, sure.
Thank you so much. Just bear with me.
If anybody else wants to testify, do they need to take the oath?
If they're here in the chambers, let's do it all together. If they call on the phone, I'll have to do it each time.
Okay, so if anyone else in the audience thinks you may want to speak to or to have signed up to speak of this, please rise at the same time. You can be sworn in, we'll do it all one time, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. And then state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn when you come down to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Thanks, Bruce.
Bruce Walters. I have been sworn.
Great.
Let's see, so to go over a few of the items that have been discussed in the presentation and questions from the board. First, with regard to the Castleman Road connection, I want to confirm across the Barbero property, it's all within existing right-of-way. There was a number of dedications and IODs made back in the '70s, not sure why, but we've designed the frontage of the project as well as the connection across the Barbero to line up with the existing improvements to ensure that it's all within existing right-of-way. Also note that there is an attached five-foot sidewalk within that connection to maintain pedestrian connectivity. With regard to the basin, a couple of points there with regard to design. I will note Condition of Approval 55, which requires that the design of the basin and landscaping be in an aesthetic fashion and be subject to review and approval by DOT staff concurrent with improvement plan approval. And also note Condition 77 with regard to the landscape corridor with, and that Condition 77 with regard to the landscape corridor with, and that applies to Southgate, who will be maintaining it. The landscape area would be reviewed and approved by Southgate and also the county prior to approval of improvements for the landscape corridor. With regard to connections to the south for that, that greenway, first of all, that, that basin is not full-size. There will be an extension to the south of that basin, so that greenway presumably would extend further south. Also, along that alignment, more or less, it can be reasonably expected that a street connection similar to the single-loaded street that's shown within the project boundary will continue south, connecting down to Carlisle, and that greenway presumably would continue down to Carlisle. That connection ultimately would be enhanced access to the school, to the south. So just for, for context.
So Bruce, if I could just understand, so, again, it's not a part of this plan, but the stubbed street you show would be, I guess, on the western perimeter of this development, would extend down through, under some future development scenario down to Carlisle. Is that right?
Yeah. If, if we can go to the composite map. I don't want to touch anything. On this exhibit, you can see the extension of the basin and the extension of the road. Now, that's only for the basin frontage, but if you can visualize that road alignment continuing south down to Carlisle, that's what I'm describing.
Okay. Thanks.
With regard to the request for single point of access, we have made measures to ensure a 36-foot wide pavement section, which I have argued, because there's no on-street parking, no on-street frontage lots, is effectively a collector road and enhances the access. The single-point access portion is relatively short, and that this request has been reviewed by county staff, DOT, SIPs, as well as SAC Metro Fire, and has been accepted. The project is consistent with general plan policies, and community plan policies is noted by staff. I will note that this project is supportive of increasing residential densities, which supports the next item, the Siemens Mobility Project, which is jobs, 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 and good for everyone. And staff, as well as the Planning Commission recommends approval of this project. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. We have any questions of the applicant? Just one, Bruce. Back to the discussion about the basin, and then the improvement standards, including the, the width of the walkway, the landscaping, irrigation installation, and so forth. Do you know whether lighting would be provided along that trail?
Yeah. So it is along a single-loaded residential street, so there will be street lighting concurrent with that, street frontage, and that would presumably project into the, the greenway sufficient to provide safe lighting for the, the corridor.
So would the lighting only be on the, I guess, the east side of that street, or would you have the alternating lighting coming back and forth across the streets? Assuming you had the houses on the other side, will the, will you have light standards on that side that's immediately adjacent to the trail?
Not necessarily, but I'll defer to my engineer, who can expand, if you will, on the location of the lighting for that frontage.
Okay, thanks.
Chairman, Natoli, members of the board, Paul Hart, McCain, Sompse.
Hi, Paul.
We can have a design for the streetlights, to have lights on the west side as well, working with DOT and the county to make sure there's adequate lighting on both sides there.
Okay. Well, I guess, good to know. And I think what it does, it would help facilitate, particularly during, you know, the, you know, dark hours of the, of the day, that, again, encourage use. And again, the lights get a little dim, and with the alternating, you get the spacing. So if you can do that, I think that would be, you know, would, would it help enhance the use of that or encourage the use of it during evening hours?
We can do that.
Okay, great. Thanks, Paul. Okay. It's all the questions. Any other questions for Bruce or Paul? If not, then stand by. We'll go ahead. We do have a speaker on this. Do we have anybody on the phone?
Chairman, I do request the ability to respond to any comments at the end of the public hearing.
Sure. Yes.
We do not have any phone calls at the time.
All right. So we do have a person. We have Emily Brantley. Emily? And Emily's current, currently serving as chairperson of the Vineyard CPAC, so, welcome.
Yeah. Hi. So I'm supposed to say, Emily Brantley?
You're sworn.
I am sworn. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brant.
Thank you for letting me talk today. I essentially, I'm here not because I'm against housing. I think we need more housing, and I, I advocate for housing projects. I just think that, I have, I have some concerns. I'm glad that you got my letter. I apologize. It's late. I'm learning about this process of public engagement in my involvement in the CPAC. But as I mentioned in my letter to you all, is the exception made for this only having one point of access is just a concern, it's a concern to me. And although along most of Castleman, there aren't properties that face Castleman, this new development has eight to 11 lots that will face Castleman and will have potential parking, making the street smaller there potentially. Also, the fence area, so at the end of our development, Castleman Ranch where I live, the, the sidewalk is stubbed, is what you guys call it, and it stubs into the fence of the Barbero property, that family, that one lot. So it stubs into the fence, and it's quite a bit higher than, I would say it's probably at least five feet elevated. So I'm not sure what that will look like. I'm not an engineer, and I'm sure you guys will find a way, a great way to do that. But, but right now, it does run into that person's property, and it does, it is a bit higher than where the street level is. I know this because I have a seven and a three-year-old who we kind of climb down to get to the street, so my kids can continue to walk down the more rural part of Castleman. So just my general concerns about connectivity and the cohesive nature of some of these developments. I noticed a lot that we have, and I, I know it's a lot out of our control, probably, but there's a lot of developments that are just kind of disjointed, and, and it, it takes away from people's ability to walk outside and, or go for long walks and be connected, and kids to be able to walk to school and things like that. And I just think that, I think that maybe this could be done a bit better, to make this safer and to make it something that enhances the community. And so I think that's, I think that's all I have to say. I just, I just don't really support this project because of the safety factors and things like that.
Okay. Well, great. Well, thank you, Emily, for being here. I don't know if there's any questions of Emily?
No. Thank you, Emily.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else here wish to address this item? If not, Emily was the only speaker. Mr. Walters, did you need to come up to respond to anything that was put on the record?
Chairman, thank you. Bruce Walters, I have been sworn. Yes, there is a, a great difference with the existing walk, and that would be during construction of the road improvements, that would be taken back and swung down to the, to connect up to the interim improvements. That would be a, a transition that, right now, it looks like it doesn't, doesn't connect, and it wouldn't. So we'd need to take that back within the existing landscaping and bringing it, bring it down to connect up.
So, so to be crystal clear, your intention is to connect that in a way that it's traversed upon?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and the, the existing connection that I'm referring to is within landscape, within the landscape corridor owned by Southgate, and they would be reviewing and approving all that at the time.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just borrow three seconds of your time?
Sure.
I'm trying to retire, and wanted to let you know this may be my last hearing or presentation in front of the board, so just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure working with staff in the county, and I wish the county, the members of the public, and everyone best wishes in, in moving forward in the future. Thank you.
Well, Bruce, we'd extend that to you as well. So I know you've appeared before this board many times, certainly during my tenure, but even prior to. So you've been doing this for well in excess of 30 years, so.
1988 was my first hearing in front of the board.
Don't go anywhere, Bruce.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So before I respond to the last comment that you just made, you know, I appreciate Ms. Brantley's concerns, and as someone that I suspect probably is not a professional planner, or maybe has limited familiarity with, with how subdivisions are designed and how large specific plans and PUDs are implemented. Wouldn't you agree, Bruce, that perhaps, from a, from a, perhaps a layperson's perspective, when they see things like stub sidewalks, or the, you know, notorious, you know, white two-by-eight fence that, that...
Barricades.
Yeah, that, that signals termination, at least temporarily, of, of streets, that kind of thing. That has a lot to do with, with the timing of, of when subdivisions are actually constructed. It has a lot to do with the nature of ownership within large master planned projects and the, the timing of participation in those projects. Is that, is it, is it, do you agree with that first? And is it somewhat typical that that has been your experience over, as you just mentioned, the last 30 years?
Yeah. The, the physical improvements that go in and the phasing of development is always a little misleading to the, to the general public. The fact that that sidewalk stub stops abruptly and incompletely in appearance, the fact is that there typically are plans for extensions and connections and all the rest. They're on paper. You've got to dig deep to find them. But yes, I, I understand and would agree that there's, there's kind of a disconnect between the physical and the, the planned future.
And in terms of your retirement, Mr. Walters, you and I actually, well, I started at Windcrest Homes the same year you, I think, started practicing. And of course, over the years, you did a number of, worked on a number of the maps that Windcrest Homes had you design and then obviously constructed back in the Laguna Creek days, when Laguna Springs and was, was, I think, one of the first subdivisions I had a chance to actually go pound nails on when I was still a college student. But I appreciate all the work over the three decades and having worked with you very directly in my time before being on the board in a different capacity, but certainly during my time over the last 11 years. As a member of this board, I think you've always been a real honest broker when it comes to helping us address changes, necessary changes, that need to take form in some of, some of the planning that goes on. And you've been very responsive. So I appreciate the friendship. I appreciate, appreciate your professionalism, and I hope you are going to do some, something much more fun than designing subdivisions in your retirement.
Thank you. And I will add, I, I am considering various volunteering activities, so hopefully that'll lead to some positive things as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Wish you, wish you well.
Thank you.
Chris, if I could, before we bring back to the board for motion, I just wanted to say, I think maybe there's something you touched on, or Mr. Serna, that, again, in the Vineyard area, and again, now represented by three members of this board, there is a patchwork, a quilt of development, and some of it relates to many years ago with the overflight from May 3rd that precluded sewer and water coming into some of the areas. Obviously, more recently, over the last, you know, 35, 40 years, we've seen development kind of in, in different locations. It hasn't always proceeded from north to south, east to west. But I know that certainly with, you know, folks like Emily, but also folks like Bruce and others, and our county staff that, you know, have worked diligently as a county to do our best to one plan for the, you know, the, the future development patterns, and whether it's been road widens, open spaces along creeks, schools, firehouses, parks, all the various amenities, including a library. I know that, you know, somebody, Supervisor Kennedy's been working on in the community to hopefully see a future library along Bradshaw Road that will serve the community as well. But there's been a lot of effort, and it hasn't always been easy. I'll just say that when I first got elected to this board, nearly 28 years ago, that the Elk Grove West Vineyard area was an area that was used as the example of, maybe not how to, how to do it best, because we'd seen Laguna, where we were able to have large aggregation of, of lands and properties that, again, there were still in holdings with private residences and, you know, even some farmland and so forth. But with a kind of a master planning, I think we built off of that, certainly with the various iterations of the Vineyard Plans, North Vineyard, Floren Vineyard Gap, and certainly the Vineyard Springs Comprehensive Plan over the years. To, I think, one, have financing mechanisms and to hopefully eliminate some of the frustration that I think Emily spoke to with young families, the affordability of homes, but certainly the amenities that attract folks there, schools and parks and close, you know, proximity to, you know, work opportunities and so forth. But it's been, it's been a challenge, and it's not one development that can fund all of that. And we're currently challenged by some of the smaller properties within the, some of the planning areas, trying to, you know, meet some of the obligations that relates to transportation improvements. But over time, I think the plans have borne themselves out, but there are still some rough spots. In fact, I had an opportunity to, to drive with one of Emily's colleagues here, someone who I've known, has been serving in the council for a lot of years, and just looking at some areas that were formerly in District 5, but now in District 2, and to look at the pattern of developments unfolding, but there are still stub streets, there are stub sidewalks, there are areas that, you know, have potential linkage, but linkage isn't there yet. And it's because the timing of some of the development obviously doesn't fall in any, in any pattern that's very, that's altogether predictable. So, and drainage and transportation have been two of the key ones at the county end of it, and obviously, schools and parks and some of the other utilities have, have, had to follow on and be a part of that overall development. But I, I, I think that if you look at it, and certainly looking to the future, and we have other items that will be coming on our agenda in the months ahead, the, I want to just say that the input from our council, certainly from our professional staff, and from those that bring proposals before us have, we've worked really hard as a board to try to, you know, I think formulate good approaches that take into account some of the needs at the immediate time, but also recognize the long-term vision of how things will be connected and how people will get around, and certainly livability and quality of life in their communities. So I just, I wanted, I wanted to point that out because, you know, we do have a recommendation for denial from the CPAC, and that, and I, for one, take that seriously, as I think my colleagues do. And we have a, you know, we have other recommendations before, it's relative to the Planning Commission and Planning Staff. But I don't discount for a moment some of the concerns, and I think they're real. And at least, the, the one issue, as minors may seem, the sidewalk will be addressed, but there are still other issues of connectivity in this area, but other areas of Vineyard as well, so. All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. At this time, first of all, I want to address your concern about lighting on the trail, and you have my commitment to meet with Southgate to have those discussions. We meet regularly. The, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation with one addition and a condition that the applicant meet, and we can wordsmith this, you can wordsmith this later, but the applicant meet with District 2 Superintendent and Civic Thread, formerly Safe Routes to Schools, to identify potential improved access and routes to schools.
Okay. All right. So that's in the form of a motion, and...
Second.
Okay.
May I interrupt?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Because this is the general plan round.
Uh-huh.
We just want to do the environmental aspect first, and then after we do the next item and adopt the general plan resolution, then we'll come back and do the balance of this.
Got it. Thank you.
So we can hold on that motion, understanding what the intent is, but the motion then would be, right now, would be to adopt a environmental document?
Correct. To determine that the previously certified Floren Vineyard Community Plan final impact, final environmental impact report is adequate, as well as the addendum, and adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program.
I will withdraw my former motion, and that was, that is my motion.
Okay.
I will withdraw the former second and make that my second.
Okay. So we've heard the motion and the second, and again, there were no... Okay, so we've heard the motion and the second, and again, there were no speakers on the phone, and we thank Ms. Brantley for being here, so please vote.
Unanimous vote, and you are correct, there were no public comments.
Okay, all right, so we'll be coming back to each of the three previous items after we hear item number seven.
Okay, so item number seven is the Siemens Mobility. This is a general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, community plan amendment, and rezone for three parcels, 7356, 7372, and 7382 French Road, located on the west side of French Road, south of Florin Road in the South Sacramento community. And the applicant is Siemens Mobility, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
And we have Kimber Gutierrez with us now, so my gosh, we get to all of our
I know, a bunch of new faces. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. My name is Kimber Gutierrez, and I will be presenting the Siemens Mobility project. The project site consists of three parcels located on the west side of French Road, approximately .3 miles south of Florin Road in the South Sacramento community. The subject site currently contains temporary parking and storage operations for the Siemens Mobility Main Campus, which is west adjacent to the subject sites. Across French Road to the east is a single-family residential neighborhood. The subject parcels contain different land use designations. The northernmost parcel, which is 7356 French Road, is located within the Old Florintown Special Planning Area in the mixed-use residential sub-district. This parcel is designated SPA in the community plan and medium-density residential in the general plan. The other two parcels are currently zoned residential density two, or RD2, which is two dwelling units per acre, with a portion of each property in the South Sacramento Industrial Neighborhood Preservation Area. These parcels are also designated RD2 in the community plan and low-density residential in the general plan. In addition to Siemens' Main Campus to the west, the subject parcels are bordered by single-family residential to the north, south, and east. The subject parcels were originally zoned for agricultural purposes. However, in the late 70s, the South Sacramento Industrial NPA was created, resulting in all three parcels being rezoned to RD2 with an NPA overlay. In 2011, the board adopted the Old Florintown SPA, which resulted in the main Siemens Mobility Campus and northernmost subject parcel, as well as parcels to the north being rezoned to SPA with the associated sub-districts. This action eliminated the NPA overlay to the parcels included in the SPA. However, this change was never captured within the actual NPA document. On May 5th, 2020, the board adopted an interim urgency ordinance to mitigate impacts from COVID-19 to supply chains, construction, and development activities. The ordinance authorized the issuance of temporary use permits for the emergency temporary use of land, where otherwise the use may not be allowed, when a determination of overriding public interest was made. In the case of Siemens Mobility, it was determined that the use of these three parcels for the storage of railcars in various states of completion represented an overriding public interest by maintaining both essential transportation supplies as well as local employment. Shortly thereafter, the zoning administrator issued an emergency temporary use permit for the subject parcels, allowing the temporary use of property for laydown space to store incomplete train assemblies and associated subsections, interim product, storage, and overflow parking for employees for a period of one year. The permit was extended for an additional year, resulting in an expiration date of June 15th, 2022. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment, as well as two zoning ordinance amendments, a community plan amendment, and rezone. This entitlement package will allow for the future expansion of Siemens Mobility Campus to accommodate anticipated growth. No specific development plans have been submitted at this time. However, the applicant has indicated the near-term use of the property will be for overflow employee parking and storage for the main Siemens Mobility Campus, which will be subject to a subsequent planning entitlement. So either non-discretionary design review with project review committee review, or a special development permit and discretionary design review, depending on what the proposal contains. Additional physical improvements to the site will be required for this anticipated use, including the construction of onsite drainage facilities, replacing the gravel surface with a paved asphalt surface, lighting and landscaping improvements, as well as installation of a masonry wall. These required improvements have been provided as advisories from various departments and agencies, and is included in the report package as attachment three. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared pursuant to CEQA for this project and released for public review on March 8th of this year. The environmental analysis discussed a number of impacts and concluded the project would result in a less-than-significant impact to most environmental topics. However, in regards to biological resources, cultural resources, and greenhouse gas emissions, the environmental document concluded that the project would result in a less-than-significant impact with the implementation of identified mitigation measures. The South Sacramento CPAC met on September 30th of 2021 to consider the entitlement request. A written comment was received regarding noise and light pollution after hours of operation, and CPAC members did express concern about the noise levels, but had no objection to the change in land use designations of the properties. The CPAC unanimously voted 4-0 to recommend the board approve the requested entitlements. The proposed request was also distributed to the Florin Historic Society as required by the Old Florintown SPA, and a response was received indicating no concern with changing the land use designation of the properties to light industrial. The Planning Commission met on March 28th, 2022 to consider the requested entitlements and members asked questions related to applicability of Senate Bill 330, which I will cover in the next slide, and the community's noise concerns. The applicant team provided background on the need for Siemens Mobility's expansion efforts and explained their community outreach approach, including efforts taken to minimize impacts to neighboring properties. One member of the public, the same member from who commented at CPAC, provided verbal and written testimony for the project and indicated their concern, again, with noise and light pollution with the project. Following deliberations, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend the board approve the requested entitlements. And then just to note, this entitlement package does not include a design review as a specific development plan was not part of the proposed request. All right, Senate Bill 330, or the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, was intended to prohibit local jurisdictions from enacting new laws that would have the effect of reducing the legal limit of new housing within their borders, or delay new housing via administrative or other regulatory barriers. Under SB 330, parcels of land where housing is in allowable use may not be downzoned, and general or specific land use designations may not be changed to a less intensive use as compared to what was allowed as of January 1st of 2018. However, cities and counties may downzone or limit a property to less intensive uses if changes in land use designations or zoning elsewhere are concurrently made to ensure no net loss in residential capacity. So Senate Bill 8, approved in 2021, did clarify the term concurrently to mean that actions generally must be approved at the same public hearing. So based on the maximum allowed density, staff has determined that the three subject parcels could potentially accommodate up to 38 dwelling units. The item you heard immediately before this one, the Castleman Northwest subdivision, would result in a change in land use desert land use to accommodate 66-unit subdivision, where typically without the rezone, only one unit would be allowed. So approval of the Castleman Northwest subdivision results in an increase in residential capacity exceeding the 38 units, being eliminated by the Siemens Mobility request. So as these two items are being considered at the same hearing, staff has concluded that the request is consistent with the provisions of SB 330 and SB 8. Staff's analysis of the entitlement package has concluded that it can be found consistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning code. As conditioned, the subject parcels are not on the Housing Elements Low Income Housing inventory, so a no-net-loss analysis is not required. However, the proposed request is subject to the provisions of SB 330. So with the board's concurrent approval of the Castleman Northwest project, a net gain of residential capacity will be occurring. There are no significant environmental concerns. The project was supported by the South Sacramento CPAC, and the proposed request would allow Siemens to expand their operation, which is compatible with the existing land uses. I did want to touch on the rezone conditions that are included. They contain basically a guide to the development of the subject parcels to the anticipated employee parking and storage use. The subsequent planning entitlement is conditioned to be submitted within 60 days of rezone approval and constructed within 360 days of rezone approval. Additionally, the emergency temporary use of property shall remain in effect until the infrastructure for use of storage and parking is constructed. And if the infrastructure is not constructed within 360 days after approval of the rezone or any subsequent extension, the site shall be restored to its original condition. No additional operation conditions or operational conditions have been applied to the existing and near-term use of property, which will be for the overflow employee parking and storage.
Kimber, can I ask you, why do you use 360 days versus one year?
Good question. Not sure. I'll note that for future
Okay.
Future reports.
All right.
All right. So therefore, staff does recommend approval of the proposed project. Before concluding my presentation, I do want to walk through the recommended actions. So the first would be to approve the general plan resolution, which involves items four through seven. Second, taking action on the remainder of the Siemens Mobility entitlement package, which would be determining that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to CEQA is adequate and complete, adopting the MMRP, and adopting the three ordinances, which includes rezoning the identified properties to the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District, and amending the Old Florintown SPA and South Sacramento Industrial NPA to reflect the rezone. And then lastly, we will be bringing the Castleman Northwest entitlement package back to you, so we'll bring Mr. Puhuli back up to walk you through those entitlements again. So with that, I will conclude my presentation, and I can answer any questions you may have. I also believe we have a representative from the applicant team on the phone, as well as in the audience, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kimber. Okay, any member of the board, any questions? No one's in the queue, so with that, we'll then go to the applicant representatives. I know Mr. Hooper's in the audience, and I think others from Siemens maybe were as well, so didn't have any sign of receipt, so you're welcome to come forward. Anybody representing the applicant?
This is Greg.
Oh, Ms. Thatch, oh, Greg's on the phone, okay.
Chair, I'm I'm on the phone. I had hoped to be there, but a little thing called COVID got in my way.
Uh-oh.
So I decided not
We're glad you're where you're at, Mr. Thatch, thank you. So we wish you well, though. Okay, Greg, go ahead.
It is my it is my privilege to represent Siemens Mobility, and as you noted, there are some other team members in the audience, should there be questions. What I think is significant about this project is not only that it's a very important project to Siemens, but it's a very simple matter on the one hand, but a somewhat complex process. Siemens, as you know, has been a major employer and manufacturer in our community since the 80s, and growing the campus on French Road makes sense with these residential lots, which are immediately contiguous to their campus. Your board did adopt a an emergency ordinance, an urgency ordinance, and an emergency temporary use permit was issued, as Kimber mentioned in her presentation. But I think it's important to note that that permit does not allow for any permitted improvements. Thus, there's chain link fence, not a wall, there's temporary lighting, there's gravel. What this proposal does is to allow that to become permanent with permanent improvements. And as also noted, Siemens will need to make that application very, very quickly, and we are prepared to do that. Those improvements will include paving the area, a masonry wall on three sides, heavy landscaping, lighting, and French Road improvements. Now, as to the complexity, and I think Mr. Puhuli and Ms. Gutierrez have identified the complexity here, in order to accomplish this, we need to have a general plan amendment, a community plan amendment, a rezone, and it must be removed from the SPA and the NPA. So there comes the complexity, and added on to that is SB 330. But as noted, the Castleman project is actually quite compatible in achieving that goal. We do agree with all of the conditions, and we note that we had an analyst vote from the CPAC and the Planning Commission. We did engage in community outreach, we retained SOI communications, not the easiest thing to do in a COVID world, but they made 117 contacts within the neighborhood and conducted 39 interviews. Of those contacted and interviewed, there was no opposition to the project. The biggest question raised was that people wanted to know if they could get a job there. There is one neighbor, and you may hear from her today, that has complained about light and noise. She is immediately across the street from this temporary use. We would submit that when the masonry wall goes in, the lighting, permanent lighting goes into county standards, paving, landscaping, and French Road improvements, these issues will be significantly mitigated. I would also note that in response to that, Siemens has made several changes. They have moved their shipping and receiving to the other side of the campus. Frequently at night, oversized loads come in, they can only travel at night, so those will come into the site, but immediately moved to the west side. There are only two shifts which operate on this side of the campus, so things should be quiet by 10:00 PM. They have closed the roll-up doors that might provide some sound. They have changed their waste hauling contract to come during the day and not at night, and they've installed a hotline for people with complaints. In closing, I would simply say, this is a matter of significant interest to Siemens. It allows them, at a time when more and more funds are putting into light rail and other types of transportation, it allows them to rise to that occasion. That's good for them, but it's also very good for our community. We would encourage your positive vote on this, Mr. Chair and members of the board. And with that, I will close and answer any questions before before I cough.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Greg. Any questions, Mr. Thatch? All right, wish you a speedy recovery, Greg. Standby. Are there others in the audience that wish to address this? I don't have any other speaker forms. Anyone want to come forward and address the board on this? All right, I see.
I'm not, I mean, I'm the neighbor that's complaining. I don't know if I'm supposed to do something.
Yeah, you, yeah, if you want to address the board, you come forward and just give us, if just one second, anybody else on the applicant team besides Mr. Thatch that wanted to present, if not, I'm going to invite. Okay.
I don't think there is anyone else.
Okay, very good. Okay, come on down, just give us your name, and you can fill out a form, so.
My name is Leslie Brewer.
Come on down, Leslie.
We don't have to swear in on this item.
You're good.
Just come to the podium, and we'll get your name afterwards.
You don't need to swear, and we won't swear at you, I promise, so, okay. All right, Leslie.
My husband and I are not against the rezoning. We are the neighbors that are complaining about the noise level. And it, you know, my husband gets up at 4:30 in the morning, we go to bed around 8:39, and it seems, you know, obviously, the house is quiet, so now we can hear it. You know, we do live behind a busy street, we have double-pane windows, so we do not hear the noise, we do not hear the train, but the metal pounding is different. It comes right through the house, it makes the house vibrate, and just as we're trying to go to sleep, it's when it starts. And you consistently can hear the backup beeper. I mean, I don't even understand how a forklift can, in a period of time, be in reverse the entire time, just constantly going. So that is our concern. You know, it seems like they've gotten busier. I mean, granted, you know, they have moved behind us just, I don't even know, the last couple of years, and we, I have tried reaching out, I've reached out many times to Siemens with absolutely no response from them at all, and they're not good neighbors, I can say that, you know, without any hesitation. So and so now seems like they're busier, so they are, you know, working where we can't even enjoy our backyard. We have a swimming pool, we love being in our backyard at the end of the day, and, you know, it's by 6 o'clock, we're done. We gotta come in the house, it's just the noise level's too loud. You know, we'll put on a stair, you know, music to kind of drown it out, it doesn't, it doesn't You know, we'll put on the music to kind of drown it out, it doesn't do it. And especially the pounding, I mean, literally, you can feel it, you know? And, you know, it's just frustrating. I know, you know, everybody just wants to, you know, I mean, I feel very ignored, I feel like no one has heard us. I've tried, I've called all the different agencies trying to find someone who would be our advocate for this. I can't find anybody, no one. And so I feel just frustrated. Like I said, we're not against this rezoning, but we want them to take responsibility. And the hotline, just like Mr. Thatcher talks about, I called it, they had no idea what we were talking about, and he says that I called before they communicated to the staff. It was over three weeks. Did it take them that long to communicate to their staff that the neighborhood could be calling and saying, if there's a noise level at 3:00 a.m. to stop, to have the workers stop? The security guard or whoever answered the phone, she said, "I don't have the authority to stop production." She says, "We're a 24-hour shift, and they're growing." And I know that, too. I believed everything she said because I live here and I know it. So that is my frustration and why I'm here, because it's like, like I said, I have nobody to represent any of us. I will give them credit, one of my neighbors that lives on Dan Ridge, he's an elderly man, and he, you know, when I walked around and talked to the neighbors, he's the one that told me about the garbage cans being dumped at 3:00. He said consistently, "I woke up at 3:00 a.m.," and they did fix that. So I will give them that. But for us that live right here, you know, across, and we do live directly across from the main yard that they're working at, nothing's changed.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Brewer. If you want to maybe stand by, now Supervisor Kennedy is in the queue here, so he may have some questions.
Well, I have one statement, and I would like to disagree with you as far as you don't have a representative on this. You're looking at him, so.
Well, I did know, I mean, I asked who.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So what I'm going to ask you to do, as instance, I don't have a business card on me, is you can either contact my office, I'm easy to find online, just Google it, or if you want to come up here and give me your contact information, I'd be happy to come out to your house and meet with you.
Oh, perfect, I would love that.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Well, again, that's a really good start, and it sounds like you've obviously been active in trying to pursue some relief, Ms. Brewer, and again, from what I understood from Mr. Thatcher's presentation, they've attempted to modify their operation, but they are busy, and again, it's conflicting, obviously, with your ability to have a quality of life that you and your husband would like to enjoy.
Right, a quality of life in our home and in our backyard. I will, I do need to say, Mr. Thatcher has brought up every meeting in regards to that they can't get permits during the day to move some heavy equipment that needs to be done at night. We do not hear that. He brings that up every time, and we do not hear that, and I've said that, we do not hear that. And where they come in is like catty-corner from our yard, we do not hear that. It's the pounding of the metal with them working to make the light rails, obviously. That is what our number-one complaint is, just the noise level at night. I mean, I just retired, and I hear it during the day, but I'm okay with it. It's at night that, you know, we just want to sleep, you know, we want to go to sleep without hearing it.
Okay. And you said 3:00 a.m. recently?
I called, I even have proof, I called, that was the time I used the hotline. And I have proof that I called at 3:00 a.m.
Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Kennedy certainly has offered as the supervisor of the area to meet with you, certainly at your place of residency, and I trust, you know, Mr. Thatch obviously will be very available to Mr. Kennedy to try to work with the Siemens folks to hopefully find a, you know.
A solution, yeah. I mean, like a sound barrier wall. When he's saying, they're saying, I can't remember his term, not cinder block, he's used a term. Are they willing to do that in front, on their side, on the French Road? Because anytime they've talked about fencing, it's the wood fence that's there now, I mean, not in that spot, but the existing part of Siemens and landscaping, that's not going to stop the noise level. A wood fence is not going to stop anything.
My understanding is, and again, I don't know exactly where you are, proximate to the properties that are before us, but on the properties that are before us, that frontage will have the new concrete masonry wall, and I understand they may even have a facade that, in addition to that, will, you know, be similar to the wood fencing that's there currently, but that it will actually have a sound wall, you know, behind it that will, but that won't be the entire length, it's only the properties that are currently before us for a rezon.
Well, that's where I'm at, I'm directly right there. Those three parcels, I am right there.
Okay, so maybe get clarification while you're here, and I see Mr. Kennedy shaking his head.
That is correct. That is correct, that the subsequent project to develop the site as a parking lot and a lay-down storage area will result in a CMU block wall along the French Road frontage.
Right across from her house?
Correct.
And what's the height of that?
I believe it's six or seven feet.
Because that fence is higher than seven feet, is it an eight-foot fence, isn't it currently, the current wood fence?
I'm not sure about the current wood fence, but the masonry wall would be six or seven.
I don't know, it's pretty high.
No, wood fence is about that high, yeah.
It's not six, yeah, you're probably right, because it's not six.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, what conditions are there going to be? You guys approved their zoning, I mean, what's their timeframe in doing that?
360 days.
Huh?
360 days, right?
Okay, so for them to do that, to do those additionals, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, I wasn't, you know, this is my first time being in something like this.
No, that's good, we're glad you're here.
I heard this, but I wasn't sure what that meant, okay.
So that would be part of the conditions of approval. From the day that this is approved, then they have less than a year.
Yeah. 360, yeah, 360.
Full circle.
Full circle. Anyway, we, you know, again, Ms. Brewer, if you want to talk to certainly Kimber or Chris or Mr. Kennedy, you know.
I do want to get Mr. Kennedy's information.
Okay, so if you want to stay around, we're going to take this up in a moment, so, and glad you're here with us and appreciate the time. Okay, so anybody else here to address this? Do you see anyone else? Do we have anyone on the phone?
Do not have any public comments on the phone.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the board, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. So this really is the simplest, most complex project I've ever worked on.
It's an oxymoron.
It should have been easy, but with all of the things that we went through, and then throw on SB 330 and SB 8 on top of it, so I really want to thank staff. You know, there was some new territory that was traversed here, so Chris has been fantastic, Kimber, I appreciate your efforts, appreciate Mr. DeFonte, even Mike Penrose. You know, we used all the heavy hitters on this three lots, but as I've said many times, this may seem like a small project, but it's an incredibly important project for South Sacramento, being the biggest employer. But it has implications far beyond that, being that it's, you know, one of the primary producers of light rail cars, including RT, and that's why we did the temporary, because they couldn't continue to manufacture and even meet the needs of RT, the Northeast Corridor. You know, so, you know, it also plays into our climate strategy. So it's just been an incredibly complex, small but important project. I will say, as far as outreach goes, I lessened during COVID, but, you know, I regularly meet with the projects across the street, and to make sure that there were no problems, particularly when we redid the landscaping and fencing and increased the size of the parking lot a few years back. And really, with the exception of the neighbor in the audience, you know, here again and again, they're a good neighbor. I mean, if they have any complaints, it's the truck traffic that's not associated with Siemens that goes up and down French Road. So, but, that being said, I would welcome the opportunity to meet with you, and, you know, Siemens, in my experience, has been very obligatory and very good to work with as far as does not want to be a bad neighbor, so I do welcome the opportunity to meet. So with that, I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Chris, you know, motion is second, now we've got this order of things we have to do.
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure that the order that we mentioned during Kimber's presentation was that we would first ask the board to take action on the general plan amendment, resolution first, and following completion of that action, then the balance of the entitlement package for the Siemens Mobility project, and then, of course, we would go back to the Castleman Northwest.
Just to make it more complicated.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so the first motion then is to move the general plan amendment and the environmental document that goes with that, is that correct?
Just the general plan amendment.
Just the general plan amendment, okay. All right, that's.
And I make that motion.
Second.
All right, let's move to second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, Mr. Puhuli, next.
The balance of entitlements for the Siemens Mobility project.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
And those would include, just from Ms. Brewer's input, those include the conditions that were outlined, the ones you spoke to, as well as all of them in the report, which are numerous, so.
That's correct.
Okay. One second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, now we go back.
Back to item six, the Castleman Northwest entitlements.
I will again make staff recommendation, if it's appropriate at this time, counsel. Move for staff recommendation with the caveat that we also have a mitigation measure that the applicant will meet with District Two staff in civic thread, formerly Safe Routes to Schools, to identify potential improved routes to schools.
Second.
If I can just ask real quickly, that would be a condition of approval and not a mitigation measure?
That would be a condition of approval and within six months of approval.
You don't want 360 days?
Okay, that's the motion, and we have a second. All right, please, please vote. On Castleman Northwest. All right, now what about the other items? You still have the other items, though, right?
The other items only with the general plan resolution.
So they were all included, those were included, those included?
That's correct.
Seven, six, all the way through two.
Correct.
Or three, excuse me. Okay. All right, so that concludes the actions that are necessary to move the items today, and so that's the balance of our agenda, so let me go to, and we're going to adjourn here momentarily, but let me go to Ann first for any comments from a county executive.
No comments today, thank you.
Okay, board members, any comments? Mrs. Serna, Phil.
I do have an adjournment, Mr. Chair.
Sure, Phil, go ahead.
I don't know if Supervisor Frost had any comments.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
So today, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Esteban Villa. Esteban Villa, a founding member of the Sacramento Artists Collective Royal Chicano Air Force, whose activism and artwork led to national prominence, died on May 15th at the age of 91. He and other founding members started the group at Sac State in 1969 to convey the goals of Chicano Civil Rights and the United Farm Workers of America Labor Union. They created a place where artists gathered, offered mutual support, and created art in the forms of murals, political posters, music, painting, sculptures, and poetry while planning educational programs and events. Villa was also a muralist, printmaker, and musician according to the Online Archive of California, which partners with libraries, museums, historical societies, and University of California campuses that maintain collections of works. Esteban Villa was born in Tulare and taught high school for 10 years before joining the Sac State faculty. He retired from the university in 1995 after 25 years of service. He has served as an art consultant to schools and organizations and conducted art programs for prisoners. Numerous venues, including Sacramento's Crocker Art Museum, have exhibited his work. Villa and other members of the Royal Chicano Air Force, including the late Sac State Professor Jose Montoya, mentored and inspired generations of students and activists, said Philip Garcia, a retired Sac State administrator who recently nominated Villa for an honorary doctorate of Fine Arts degree from Cal State Sacramento. RCAF murals, including Villa's works, can be seen at South Side Park in Sacramento, the underpass to Old Sacramento, and the Macy's parking lot, on the side of the Macy's parking lot in downtown Sacramento. I will just add, too, that more recently, he and Stan Pivia and Juan Ishi Rosco, also members of RCAF, completed a work, a seminal work entitled Flight, which is displayed in the Golden One Center, and that was a project that Juan Carrillo, also a very dear friend of mine, my family's, served as project manager, and that work was completed actually with some of the remnant tobacco litigation settlement proceeds that District One was left with from my predecessor. So have a very strong recent connection with the work of Esteban Villa. And then, Mr. Chair, I also like to share on more personal note something that I shared in reflection of Mr. Villa's passing recently on social media. Ten days ago, we lost our RCAF general, a dear educator, artist, father, musician, leader, philosopher, humanitarian, grandfather, poet, comedian, advocate, writer, activist, and friend. I had the privilege and honor of knowing Señor Villa since I was a little kid. He and my other RCAF tios and tias helped raise me, instilling in me such a profound appreciation for art to this day, that with every musical performance or photo exhibit, which I have the honor of being involved, I know who to thank. Most importantly, Esteban Villa and other Chicano artists of the era showed us young people the critical intersection of art, politics, public policy, social equity, and governance. I will never forget the weekends of our silk-screening barn raisings to produce thousands of political lawn signs, or even larger, to advocate for everything from young Latino candidates running for office to critical farmworker bills and statewide measures. If not for people like Esteban Villa, I would not be who I am today as an artist or exercise the passion I possess for important social justice causes, as we all do, and as I do as a county supervisor. Gracias por todo, Esteban Villa, y vaya con Dios.
Well, thank you, Phil, for sharing, obviously very, very personal, but someone who left a very deep imprint on this community, and certainly, you know, along with other artists and talented and committed folks, made a big difference, and will continue to, obviously, even in passing. So I know I had a chance to, you know, at the opening of the works there at the Golden One to meet some of the folks, and he was one of them, so. Very revered, and obviously deeply personal, his loss for you, for your family, but for the broader Sacramento community, no question about that. So today, unless we have any other adjournments, then we will adjourn in memory of Mr. Villa, and certainly extend our condolences to all of his family and family of many friends in this community, and we know he'll continue to inspire generations to come. So with that, unless there's anything else, we'll adjourn in memory of Mr. Villa.